Okay, welcome everyone. We'd like to call to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting. First, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner and then, following that, he also will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity that each one of us has been afforded. We ask that you be with us tonight as we honor the people's business, allow us to represent them with a high level of integrity and consistency for the values that they hold dear. I ask that you be with our country. We've had a number of tragedies, Lord, with hurricanes and shootings and a lot of people that are hurting. I just ask that you grant them a special gift of peace and serenity that only your Spirit can deliver, and ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen. If you'll face the flag, and please repeat the pledge of allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer, Commissioner Piercey, Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner P., Commissioner Cook, Commissioner Jernigan, Commissioner Kush, Commissioner Reed, Commissioner Gurley, Commissioner Turner, Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Stevens, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Baum, Commissioner Nipper, Commissioner Dodd, Commissioner Phillips, Commissioner McAdoo, Commissioner Ely, Commissioner Gooch, Commissioner Sereno. We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you very much. You have received a copy of the minutes of the last meeting, and do we have a finding on that? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed the minutes of our September 14th meeting. I find them in order. Move that we dispense with the reading and for their approval.
All right. Do we have a second? Second, Ms. Cook. Did anyone have any additions or corrections they would like to have made? If not, all of you then in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Our friends from the Third Brigade were unable to be here at this meeting, so we'll have to dispense of that presentation we were going to make to them. Next, we have a time for public comments, and tonight we have one person that wishes to speak. Ms. Susan Allen, please come forward, give us your name and address, and make your comments, please.
My name is Susan Allen. I live at 2031 Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to address a long-term concern that the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance has regarding the county legal services. And I also want to thank Mr. McCrery for alerting you to the fact that you will have to make decisions regarding this soon, as their contract expires next year. As you know by now, the RNA believes the county would be best served by an in-house attorney and legal department that represents the county as its only client. The legal services agreement now, originally written by Jim Cope for himself and his law firm in 2009, to our knowledge, was never reviewed by an independent attorney to assure the county had a sound document. We don't believe that anyone in the firm advised the county mayor or commission that this would be a wise and valid exercise. If it had been reviewed, an independent attorney would have probably noted right off, as we did after some research, that there was no escape clause to protect the county should the county attorney be incapacitated, convicted of a criminal offense, or publicly disciplined by the Board of Professional Responsibility. Nor was it stated in Mr. Cope's version that the county attorney reports to and is accountable to the county Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Stevens recognized our concern about this omission and recommended that both be included in the Second Amendment to the legal services agreement in 2012. There are many advantages to having a county legal director, and one of them, and I want to emphasize this, that this would apply to any outside firm, is the total elimination of the possibility of conflict of interest, or a perception of conflict of interest, between that firms representing the county's interests and other interests of their clients at the same time. The current legal services agreement stipulates that the law firm must give advice, approval, and consent to the mayor and county commission to retain any outside counsel. We and many commissioners in the past believe that advice and approval are wise, but consent should not be necessary. After all, it is the attorney who is answerable to the commission, not the other way around. We urge each and every one of you to study the legal services agreement wording, and we encourage you to have an outside, independent attorney advise you about anything you question or don't understand, and be able to offer changes or improvements that favor the county's needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next on the agenda is elections and confirmations, and Commissioner Turner, again, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that I forgot to do, and I apologize, Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner Gurley, if you don't mind keeping them in your prayers, they've got some upcoming medical procedures that I slipped my mind, and I apologize for that, but they did ask for the commission and members of the community to keep them in your prayers, if you will do that, please. Commissioners, the first list on the agenda is to elect our notaries. You'll find a list on your iPad, and, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, from Commissioner Phillips. Anyone have anyone that needs to be added to that list? If not, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we need to fill two vacancies on the beer board. Steering would like to nominate Mr. Travis Johnson and Mr. William Harper. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Stevens. Any other discussion or nominations? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would also like to fill a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Steering nominates Mr. Jerry Sartain. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any other nominations or discussion? All in favor, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Steering would like to also announce one alternate vacancy on the beer board. Steering would like to announce the appointment of Jessica Willis and Christina Webenmeyer as judicial commissioners, and, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion for their approval.
And Mr. Sereno, second set. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And Steering will also like to announce the reappointment of Carter Woodruff and Craig Lynch to the Consolidated Utility District Board.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Next on the agenda is a resolution to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed those items. I find all of them appropriate for the consent agenda, and move that the consent agenda be adopted.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion or anyone that wishes to remove any of those items? If not, then, we are ready to vote, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Please record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, there is no unfinished business. Next, we will then start on the reports by standing committees. Budget, Finance, Investment Committee, Commissioner Jordan, please.
Good evening, everybody. If you don't mind, on your way out, there'll be a can by the back door. I better drop a quarter in. We're taking up donations for Commissioner Kush a razor. Not a problem. I'll put a coupon in there, too. Got Adam. L-1A, General Fund Budgets Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, decrease unassigned fund balance $234,178 and increase expenditures to $34,178. This is, I think, the last of the carryover items from last year that needs to be put back in their budget that got put in unassigned at the end of the budget year. And also, decrease unassigned fund balance $5,000 to increase expenditures $5,000 for other supplies and materials. Under Finance, we've got decrease unassigned fund balance $58,515 to increase expenditures to refunds, $58,515. This is where we take the unclaimed funds, put them in the general fund, and somebody has claimed unclaimed funds, they left for several years, and so now we've got to give them back. Resolve this 12th day of October 2017. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Piercey. Questions or discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
I'm L-1B. Ambulance Service Fund Budgets Amendment Resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Ambulance Service, decrease assigned for public health, $4,381. Increase expenditures transferred to other funds, $4,381. This is the last money it's going to take to finish up the Burton Street Center over there, building over there. Resolve this 12th day of October 2017. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Dodd. Any discussion or questions? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Adam, L-1C. Resolution to issue general obligation school bonds. Ms. Nolan has a list, but this is the resolution to go to market for $87,850,000 for the school projects, including Rock Vale, Segal High School, Open Middle. I know she's got the list, but it's all the stuff we've dealt with many times and voted on multiple times in committee in that full commission. Resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $87,850,000 in aggregate principal amount in one or more series of out general obligation school bonds of Rutherford County, Tennessee, for the purpose of financing county schools, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof, and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal, premium, if any, and interest of these bonds. And there's several more pages of legalese you feel free to read at your own leisure. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Allen. Now, any discussion on this? All right, if there's no discussion, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Continuing on with standing committees, there is not a report for Health and Education, no report for Property Management, no report for Public Safety, no report from Public Works, and we have three resolutions from the Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee. Commissioner Gooch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fellow commissioners, Steering does have three resolutions for your consideration this evening. The first one is concerning our purchasing agent department, I suppose. Whereas the General Assembly proposes to enact, an act to amend Chapter 421 of the Private Act of 1943 as amended by Chapter 45 of the Private Act of 1959, Chapter 102 of the Private Act, Chapter 1989, Chapter 148 of the Private Act of 1990, Chapter 136 of the Private Act of 1996, Chapter 22 of the Private Act of 1999, Chapter 81 of the Private Act of 2002, Chapter 53 of the Private Act of 2007. Y'all keeping up. Okay. And any other purchasing act of 2017, which was passed by the 110th Tennessee General Assembly on May the 4th, 2017, and whereas a two-thirds vote of the county legislative body is required with certification of same to the Secretary of State, and whereas a copy of this act is attached heretofu and incorporated herein, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County that the Act to amend Chapter 421 of the Private Acts of 1943 as amended by Chapter 45 of the Private Acts of 1959, Chapter 102 of the Private Acts of 1989, Chapter 148 of the Private Acts of 1990, Chapter 136 of the Private Acts of 1996, Chapter 22 of the Private Acts of 1999, Chapter 81 of the Private Acts of 2002, Chapter 53 of the Private Acts of 2007, and any other acts aminitory thereto relative to the Rutherford County Purchasing Act of 2017 be, and the same hereby is adopted by Rutherford County, Tennessee. It is further resolved that the county clerk is directed to send a copy of this action to the Secretary of State for the state of Tennessee. It is further resolved that the notice to Secretary of State of ratification of private acts be completed and sent to the Secretary of State on the form prescribed by it. Resolve this the 12th day of October 2017. I move, Mr. Chair.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Turner. Any questions or discussions? Okay, then, you're ready to vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Our second resolution for your consideration is concerning, we have two privileged tax to approve. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 674602G1 authorizes a privileged tax of $1 in certain prescribed circumstances, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County has determined that it is appropriate to levy the aforementioned privileged tax. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners pursuant to TCA 674602G1, there is hereby levied, in addition to any other tax levied by this chapter, a privileged tax on litigation of $1 on any criminal charges upon conviction or by order instituted by any state or county court for any violation of Title 55, Chapter 8, or for violation of any ordinance governing use of public parking spaces as required by TCA This tax shall not apply to charges persecuted for an offense under TCA 558188. The clerk of court of Rutherford County are instructed to collect these taxes on criminal cases in the same manner as all other litigation taxes, fees, and charges. The taxes imposed by the resolution shall take effect immediately in the public welfare requiring it. Any practice of resolution previously adopted addressing, authorizing, or levying the tax provided for in TCA 674602G1 shall be and hereby affirmed, except to the extent directly inconsistent with this resolution or statute. If any provision of this resolution or the application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect other provisions or application of this resolution, which can be given effect without invalid provisions or application, and to that the end, the provisions of this resolution are declared to be severable. The resolution is not intended to, nor shall it, affect any other fees, charges, or taxes not directly addressed herein that are collected by the clerk of the courts, and the said clerks are instructed to collect all such fees, taxes, and costs which may be appropriate or permitted by the Tennessee Code Annotated. Resolve this 12th day of October 2017. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from someone. Mr. Phillips. Any questions? All right, then. All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? Let the record reflect that's unanimous. Continue on, Mr. Gooch.
And our final resolution, whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 4024107A authorizes a privileged tax to be levied in connection with certain identified criminal matters, and whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 4024107A5 authorizes the court to retain $1 from such taxes imposed with the balance to be paid over to the Department of Revenue for apportionment, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Rutherford County has determined that it is appropriate to levy the aforementioned privileged tax, with the exception of $1 to be retained by the clerk as permitted by TCA 4024107A5. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners pursuant to TCA 4024107A5, the tax imposed by subsection A of TCA 4024107 shall be collected by the clerk of various courts from persons convicted and all funds so collected, with the exception of $1 which shall be retained by the clerk to defray the expense of collecting and processing the fines, shall be paid over to the Department of Revenue for apportionment pursuant to 674606. The clerk of court of Rutherford County are instructed to collect these taxes on criminal cases in the same manner as all other litigation taxes, fees, and charges, and to retain the clerk's fee as provided herein. The taxes imposed by the resolution are to take effect immediately, the public welfare requiring it. Any private or any practice or resolution previously adopted addressing, authorizing, or levying the tax provided for in TCA 4024107A, or the retention of the clerk's fee contained in TCA 4024107A5, shall be and hereby affirmed, except to the extent directly inconsistent with the resolution or statute. If any provision of this resolution or the application thereof to the person or circumstance is held invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the other provisions or applications of this resolution, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application, and to that the end, provision of this resolution are declared to be severable. This resolution is not intended, nor shall it, affect any other fees, charges, or taxes not directly addressed herein that are collected by the clerk of the court, and the said clerks are instructed to collect all such taxes, fees, and costs which shall be appropriate, permitted by the Tennessee Code Annotated. Resolve this the 12th day of October 2017. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second. Commissioner Turner. Any questions? All right, all of you in favor of that, then, please say aye. Any opposed? Let that be reflected as unanimous. Well, Mr. Gooch, almost used up all of our time before 6:30. We still have about five minutes before 6:30, and the only item left on our agenda is this public hearing. We have one scheduled. I'm pretty sure the applicants are represented, and, yes, are there any here in opposition, or should we wait five minutes just to be sure we haven't excluded somebody from participating? Is anyone here yet that wishes to speak against this proposal? What's the wishes of the commission? Should we recess for five minutes? Mr. Jordan.
Mayor, I think we could legally get in trouble if we did not have the public, and I think we could do the lead-up stuff beforehand, but that public hearing does not need to be opened and closed before 6:30. I know this is probably not controversial, but I don't want to leave a-
Okay, I think you're probably wise there.
A little bit hanging right there.
Chair, can we go ahead and announce the ham breakfasts at this time?
We will give you a little bit of opportunity, then, to tell us if there's any other business that you're wanting to bring to our note. Mr. P.
Speaking of ham breakfasts, the Ketchikan Volunteer Fire Department will be having a ham breakfast Saturday, not this Saturday, but the next one, which will be October 21st, and that'll be from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., so please come out and support the volunteers. Thank you.
Other announcements? Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to invite each one of you, and also anyone watching on TV tonight, our audience, to Smyrna on Wednesday, October 18th, at 2:00. The town of Smyrna will be breaking ground on the Captain Jeff Kooz Memorial, which will be located in between Lee Victory Park and the Smyrna Event Center. Our commission made a contribution toward that project, and then also others have donated from businesses and private individuals, and the fund is, will be over a million dollars when it's said and done. So, this is going to be a great thing for our town, our county, and I wanted to invite every one of you to be a part of the groundbreaking.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Reed.
If you don't get enough ham at Ketchikan, you can come out to Rock Vale November the 11th. We're having a turkey shoot. The Rock Vale Ruining Club is having their annual turkey shoot, which they've done for a number of years, starting at 9:00, and we'll be having that turkey shoot until we shoot up, until we get rid of all the turkeys and ham and sides of bacon. So, we invite everybody out. It goes for a really good cause.
Where, Mr. Reed, he wanted to know where is that exactly?
Rock Vale Community Center in Rock Vale. You can't miss it.
And Commissioner Allen.
Since we did the borrowing tonight for the bond fund, I just want to take this opportunity to encourage especially our constituents, as you begin to examine and meet and discuss the state offices that are going to be run this next coming year. You're going to have, you know, folks running for Senate and House Rep, and specifically the governor's position. The lottery fund was established for education. The number one risk to our taxpayers and our constituents for increased property taxes is the speed with which we're needing to build schools. And so, you're going to see these kinds of borrowings. We've been really judicious and have had some great financial advice and been able to stave off a tax increase, but it's coming, and I can't tell you where they're going to stop, at the rate with which we're building schools. So, whoever you can talk to to put pressure on the folks at the state to give us money for bricks and mortar, we're already going to incur millions of dollars in expenses in operating these schools. We need help in building them. And so, you know, the state dictates many times class sizes and programs and things like that. They tell us what we have to do to provide education, but they don't give us money for the buildings. So, anything you can do to put some pressure on those candidates, to have them pledge to tap into that lottery money would help all the citizens across the county.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything else they'd like to bring up under any other business? If not, then, I think by the time we get our report from our staff regarding this rezoning request, we can probably be 6:30. So, rezoning request 17A024. Applicants Ben Hall McFarlane and Susan Young, located along West Jefferson Pike, and the addresses are 102, 101, 127, 155, and one unaddressed piece of property. The existing zoning is commercial neighborhood, and the residential medium density is how it's currently zoned, one of the parcels. Proposed zoning is commercial services on the size of a site that's about three acres. So, Mr. Hughes is here in behalf of our planning department as our engineer, and he's going to give us the normal report that we get from Mr. Demosi. So, Mr. Hughes, please give them an overview of this project.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Members of the county commission, Mike Hughes, county engineer. Doug is taking his staff to a planning conference, so I'm here holding the fort. But as Mayor said, there are four properties, southwest corner of West Jefferson Pike and Lebanon Pike 231. The current zoning is at 101 West Jefferson Pike and a vacant parcel, medium residential medium density, and right at the corner near Mandy Lane is at 121 and 155 West Jefferson Pike, our commercial neighborhood. And a little background, all the subject properties we rezoned from agricultural to commercial back in 1973. At that time, the property at 155 West Jefferson Pike has been utilized for a number of non-residential purposes, including a grocery store, gas station, and- purposes, including a grocery store, gas station, and other retail-type uses. A conditional use permit was approved for a daycare in 2005 and a restaurant in 2006. Two of the properties, 127 and 155 West Jefferson Pike, were zoned commercial neighborhood when the current zoning ordinance took effect in 2013. The two other properties, 101 West Jefferson Pike and the unaddressed property, the vacant property, were used as residential units and were zoned residential medium density, R.M., for that reason. The applicant is proposing to zone all four properties to commercial services. The applicant has indicated that he would like to lease the existing building at 155 West Jefferson Pike to a business that would be classified under the commercial, sales, and service activity classification as a heating and air conditioning contractor or similar type business. No redevelopment of the property is contemplated at this point. The properties in question are either zoned for commercial purposes or have been in the past. The properties are at the center of the Walter Hill Village Neighborhood Center and are at the intersection of two major arterial state highways. Staff does not see the realistic long-term usage of these properties as residential. Staff also believes that the request is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan and recommends approval. At the planning commission meeting, there was little discussion on this item. The applicant gave an overview of their plans, and nobody spoke either for or against the request during the public meeting. One of the planning commissioners did requests about equipment delivery to 155 West Jefferson Pike and the possibility of traffic issues along West Jefferson Pike. It was explained that the access to 155 West Jefferson Pike was along Mandy Lane, not on West Jefferson Pike, which should not have any negative impacts to West Jefferson Pike. The planning commission recommended approval by unanimous vote of nine, four, and zero against. This staff report, along with the zoning map, arterial map, and CED waterline map, should be in your, on your iPad. And I think I've used enough time, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hughes regarding this request? If not, then, Mr. Hughes, stand by, and maybe there will be a need for your advice a little bit later. That being the case, we will declare the public hearing for rezoning request 17-A024 to be open. Those of you that are here that wish to speak for or against this request, now is your opportunity to come forward and make your comments. So come forward if you wish to speak. Give us your name and address, please. Okay, no one is rising and coming forward to speak, so the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion regarding this request? Mr. Piercy?
Knowing this piece of property, just about all my life, it's been several things. Things come and go there. Nothing stays very long. I think this would be a real good situation to have this go in and maybe clean up part of that corner and maybe make it look a little better. I have confidence in the people that are asking for this request, and I move for its approval.
And a second, Commissioner Jordan and Dodd and others. Any other discussion or comments? All right, then, you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of this rezoning request 17-A024, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Let that reflect a unanimous vote. Mr. Clerk? Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is there any other business anyone wishes to bring before this body? If not, thank you very much. We are adjourned.